Stand with me and face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to celebrate freedom by having governmental meetings such as this. We ask that your presence be here tonight as we discuss business for Cleveland County. We ask that you be with each of the commissioners who give them the wisdom and knowledge they need to lead us in the direction you want us to follow. Thank you for blessing us as you do here in Cleveland County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. This time I'd like to recognize any elected officials we have with us tonight. If you'd stand and...
Stand, let's go forward.
Thanks for being here.
Sharon Martin, Mayor, Pro-King, Keans County, North Carolina.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank y'all for attending. And I'd like to recognize any veterans we have with us tonight. Thank you for your service.
Jason Pauls, United States Attorney.
Richard Hooker, U.S. Army.
Please, Pageant, U.S. Army.
Danny Pageant, U.S. Army. I think you guys already got one of our pins hanging up. Appreciate you serving.
Thank you. Any law enforcement we have with us tonight?
Danny How, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you for your service. And the department heads, would you please introduce yourselves?
Jason Pauls, Business Development Director.
Carrie Melt, Assistant County Manager.
Martha Thompson, Deputy County Attorney.
Chris Martin, Deputy Attorney.
Allison Moon, Human Resources.
Sherri Ladd, Tax Office.
Tom McElway, EMI.
Terry Hoades, Emergency Agent, Department of Public Health.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and thanks for all you do for the county. At this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Are there any items that need to be added to the agenda tonight?
I make the motion we adopt as proposed.
Motion? And a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we're gonna start off tonight by having a special recognition. We're honored to have Richard Hooker here tonight, the Minority Enterprise Development President, Week President, and he will come and talk to us about the Minority Enterprise Development Week. Mr. Hooker, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. Again, it is my honor and my privilege to come before you and to thank you for this opportunity to lift up an important segment of our community. There's a quote that says that when you start to believe in someone's potential, it will motivate them to accomplish more. And so, for the past 22 years, the Cleveland County Business Development Center has worked tirelessly to ensure that local entrepreneurs receive the type of recognition and support and to celebrate their success. And that is what the Minority Enterprise Development Week, which we call MEDWeek, the acronym for Minority Enterprise Development Week. It is an annual observance. It was started actually in 1983 under the presidency of Ronald Reagan to celebrate the accomplishments and achievements of minority business statewide, not only statewide, but nationally. And so, in Cleveland County, we are proud to also observe and join other communities and organizations across the state and the nation to celebrate the achievements of outstanding individuals in our respective communities. I would also state that as we survey the landscape of this country and this state, we know that the pandemic has impacted a lot of our businesses. Many of our businesses had to shutter over the period, and that has impacted and affected all of our businesses. But just wanted to give you just a brief summary and landscape of the impact of minority businesses. According to the American Business Survey covering 2018 and above, there are approximately over a million minority businesses nationally. In 2018, there were over 100,000 minority businesses that had employees in the state of North Carolina, and they generated over $16.1 million in sales and revenue. Of course, nationally, they also indicated, unfortunately, that 40% of our minority businesses were shuttered and went out of business during that period. And of course, as we know, this affected all of our businesses and impact. And so, even though the pandemic had hardworking individuals. And let me conclude by saying that it is also acknowledged that the minority business community is one of the fastest-growing segments in the nation, with over 1 million minority owners and 1.1 million women-owned businesses. And finally, it is also noted that in North Carolina, from 1997 to present, minority businesses tripled from 61,551 to over 180,000 minority businesses in the state of North Carolina. So finally, let me add that even in the toughest times, America has been characterized with the belief that anyone who has a good ideal, with good work ethic, and can work hard can succeed in this economy. And minority-owned businesses are essential to stabilizing our economy and building a solid foundation for future growth and prosperity. So with those brief comments, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, we are proud to come before you and appreciate your efforts to support Minority Enterprise Development Week here in Cleveland County.
Thank you. Do you have some guests you'd like to introduce?
Thank you.
Maybe bring up here. We have a proclamation we'd like to present to you, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to read that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I would not be forgiven if I didn't acknowledge our Vice Chairman, Mr. Robert Miller, our Vice Chair, Mr. Delmar Quay, our Board Member, Steve Pageant, Ms. Sharon Martin, and Ms. Velvet Briscoe. And if you would come forward, hopefully, for a photo op, and we'd be happy to receive the proclamation at this time.
Minority Enterprise Development Week, October 17 through the 23rd, 2021. Whereas, Minority Enterprise Development Week is an annual celebration that has been historically proclaimed by the President of the United States since 1983 to highlight the important role and contributions many business enterprises have made to our national and global economy. And whereas, this year's theme, "Reimagining Opportunity: Building Back Better Together", represents this nation's challenge and resilience to promote economic viability and recovery for minority businesses through hard work, ingenuity, innovation, and robust investments with our free enterprise system. And whereas, the annual observance in Cleveland County will be a virtual experience to recognize and commemorate the accomplishments of small business entrepreneurs, local citizens, and community organizations who give their time, resources, and humanitarian efforts to make an invaluable difference in our community and beyond. And whereas, the Cleveland County Business Development Center in collaboration with Cleveland County Community College, the Shelby Star, the Cleveland Emerging Leaders Academy, and NC Black Alliance, and other local sponsors have teamed up to raise awareness, promote business education, encourage self-sufficiency, and help improve the quality of life for all citizens in Cleveland County. And whereas, the 22nd Annual MEDWeek Celebration will also be highlighted by the addition of the "And Beyond" series and listening tour that will engage local and regional leaders on a series of thoughtful conversations around collaborative leadership, civic participation, pandemic recovery, community capacity building, and the pursuit of more just and equitable tomorrow. Now therefore, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby here proclaim October 17 through the 23rd, 2021 as Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County in recognition of the cooperative efforts of the above-supporting organizations and individuals to enhance, promote, and support the success of minority-owned businesses and community partners. Adopted this the 5th day of October, 2021.
Appreciate all y'all doing, thank you. Okay, that brings us to citizens' recognition. Madam Clerk, is anyone signed up for it?
No, sir, no one signed up.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna call on our County Manager, Brian Epley, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Bridges, members of the board. Several items for consideration this evening on the consent agenda. So bear with me as I work through these. We'll begin with item A, which are minutes from your July 6 regular Commissioner meeting. Those minutes are in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is from our Tax Administration Report, our Department, excuse me. And this is a request for late exemptions, late applications, and deferrals. Obviously, General Statute 105282 allows us to do that, and we do it periodically throughout the year for citizens who simply qualify but miss the deadline. All of these, had they applied timely, would have been approved at the staff level, but because of that delayed application, we're asking that the board allow those exemptions to occur. Item C is from our Board of Elections Department, and this is Budget Amendment Number 5 on the year. And this is a request to allocate some undesignated capital from a multi-year capital reserve fund over into a new capital project fund that'll be used to construct a new Board of Elections building. The amount being asked for for the project ordinance is $750,000. And as you're aware, that'll be built over at the former Shelby Radiology property that we acquired several years ago. Item D is Budget Amendment Number 6 on the year from the library. And this is a request to budget $1,500 in state grant dollars that'll be used to send our director to some continuing professional education. Item E from Social Services, Budget Amendment Number 7 on the year. And this is a request to budget $115,000 from the North Carolina Department of Public Health and Social Services. And it'll be specifically earmarked for young folks between the ages of 18 and 26 that are either current or former foster children through NC links that have some way through the pandemic incurred an economic hardship or job loss. And this will provide staggered payments, one-time payments, to those folks if they qualify. But again, flow-through funds from Department of Health and Human Services. Item F for consideration is also from Social Services, Budget Amendment Number 8. This request is for $89,971. Again, part of the American Rescue Plan Act, and it'll be used to access some additional computer equipment specific to food and nutritional services, as well as offsetting the county-proportionate shared cost of that. Item G, Budget Amendment Number 9 on the year. Two specific earmarks in this budget request. One is for $115,000, the other is for $1,563,354. Again, from the State Department of Health and Human Services, specifically through the American Rescue Plan Act. And these dollars will be used to supplement our school health program with the inclusion of 17 additional health professionals, three RNs, four LPNs, and 10 unlicensed assistants to help bolster onsite testing, onsite quarantine guidance, and so forth. About 10 of those folks are already hired and in place, but this will be really helpful in helping mitigate some of those challenges in the school system. Item H is Budget Amendment Number 10. This is a request to budget $39,900. Again, from the State Department of Health and Human Services. These dollars will be used to create an Equity Advisory Council to specifically communicate and message to our typically and traditionally underutilized populations where there's an unproportionate ratio for folks who aren't vaccinated and are becoming ill with COVID-19. Item I is from the Health Department, Budget Amendment Number 11. This is a request to budget $784,466. Again, in American Rescue Plan dollars that flow through the state. And these funds will be used to purchase equipment to help expedite the testing, specifically the molecular test and the PCR test of COVID-19. As you're all aware, at this moment, we're having to capture the test and then send it to the state lab for processing. This equipment would give us the ability to do a rapid 30-minute response for PCR, molecular testing in-house, and really get folks the information they need much, much quicker. Item J is Budget Amendment Number 12 on the year. This is a request to accept $30,000 in grant funds received from Partners Behavioral Health. And the grant would specifically be used to target retailers of tobacco products to, again, educate and campaign about smart retailing, IDing, making sure that folks are the appropriate age of 21 before they're, again, engaging in those transactions with consumers. Finally, for consideration, is from our Emergency Medical Services Department. And this is a request to declare three ambulances as surplus. And the request would further be that we allocate each of those surplus ambulances to each one of our community rescue squads at no cost because of the updated fleet that we've been able to acquire. Over the last 12 months, we've had a variety of different surplus assets in the EMS department. And we really think that because of the partnership with our rescue squads and the value-add that they offer to the whole system, that this allocation would help bolster continued support moving forward. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Epley. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I want to, gee, would you be, Budget Amendment Number 9? You talked about the additional personnel.
Yes, sir.
Would you explain where they're coming from?
Yeah, so it's actually from a medical staffing agency that are located in Gaston County. They would be contracted labor, subcontracted labor, to help bolster the public health nurses that work for our Health Department that are already in the schools. And again, I think that it's coming at a critical time, obviously, as we've seen a really, you know, high escalation of quarantines, but would not be county employees and only available until the grant dollars run out. Is that, answer your question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Colonel, it's Wesley. I make a motion we accept your consent agenda.
Sorry.
Motion, a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Thank you, Brian. Okay, now we have a couple of public hearings, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the rules for the public hearing.
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments in the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
Thank you. And I'm going to recognize Planning Director Chris Martin, and he will present case 2118, request to rezone property at 112 Mullenax Drive from residential to general business conditional use.
Good evening, Board, Chairman. We've got a few cases for you tonight. And the first is a request from Michael Mull. And he's asking to change the zoning of a two-acre parcel from residential to general business conditional use. And he's wanting to use the property for a towing business and to relocate his business onto this property. Property's located on Mullenax Drive. You may wind up some vacant dilapidated buildings in the future. The planning board recommends approval, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris? If no questions, then we're gonna open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2118, request to rezone property at 112 Mullenax Drive from residential to general business conditional use, please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, anyone wishing to speak for or against, come forward and give us name and address. So, no one come up front, so we are going to close the public hearing and ask again if there's any questions or discussion by the commissioners.
No question, just a comment. I think that the direction we're moving and using this piece of property for a towing business, because it's just sitting there. And if it's not used for something, dilapidate, and will wind up with, like Chris said, some old buildings that later on will have to do something with. So, I think it'd be a very good use for it. There were no other questions. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the planning board decision to rezone the piece of property.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Pass unanimously, thanks. I believe, Chris, you told us that the neighbor's probably not gonna know a whole lot of difference because there's cars parked there now, and that's basically what he's gonna be doing.
That's right, and I should have mentioned that. The previous use was an auto repair business, and you can see from the photo that there were plenty of vehicles parked on the property previously.
Okay, and call Chris back up for case 2119, request to rezone property at 241 Battle Brown Road from light industrial to general business conditional use for RV park.
So with this request, we have heard from the petitioner today, and they're asking to table or continue this public hearing. And they're requesting at least two to four weeks' time. They're working on some site plan modifications that may affect that site plan that you've got in your packet.
So you're asking us to put this off?
Yeah, the request to the board would be to continue this case until the November 2 meeting.
So move.
All right, all in favor? Okay. So let's go down to case 2120, request to rezone property on Foster Road from rural agricultural to residential.
All right, the next case is also a request to change zoning. The petitioner is two landowners, adjoining landowners, Earl Fox and Adriana Moreno. They both own two adjoining properties, about six acres total. And they're asking to rezone those properties from rural ag, the rural agriculture district, and the residential zoning district, or to the residential zoning district. The rural ag's represented with the green color, and the residential district's represented with the white color. The main differences between those two districts is lot size, three acres versus one acre. This case was presented to the planning board. They recommend approval. They see this as an extension of an existing zoning district, basically redrawing the boundary of that residential district to include their parcels. And they felt that that request would be consistent with that area and the land use plan. I can answer any questions?
Questions or comments? If not, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2120, request to rezone property on Foster Road from rural agriculture to residential, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2120, request to rezone property on Foster Road from rural agriculture to residential, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for questions or discussion from the commissioners.
Please approve, 2120.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. Case 2121, request to amend Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, Section 12134, Water Supply Overlay District. Now, again, call on Chris Martin, Planning Director.
All right, this next item is a code amendment specifically to the water supply overlay district. Identified as our watersheds cover much of the county, mostly the northern part of the county and that southwest part of the county. There's different types of watersheds. The pink represents watershed four, and the blue represents a watershed three. And those are two types based on density and the type of water supply. The darker blue circles that you see in the watershed four area is your critical areas. And then, so, as well as the pink area in that watershed three, and that critical area is the area that's within a half mile of where you're pulling your drinking water from. So we have two places along the First Broad River, and then we have a place on the Broad River, and then Moss Lake, of course. Our current ordinance states that you can have one home per acre in the watersheds, and that parcels can be developed for up to 12% of a piece of land for non-residential uses. State requirements, so the state requires us to have an ordinance, and then they give us a model ordinance that they say that you've got to meet these minimum standards. The minimum standards from the state are half-acre lot size for residential and allow up to 24% of a piece of property to be developed. We've scanned some of the counties around Cleveland County to see what their ordinance has stated. And you see a mixed bag. You see three of the counties require half acre per home, while Cleveland County requires one, as well as a couple of the others, Gaston and Lincoln County. So at your last meeting, you directed staff to evaluate our ordinance and also the state's requirements and bring you a version of our ordinance that would allow some flexibility to the property owners in those watershed areas while still maintaining the state minimum requirements so that we're protecting that drinking water. And you've got in your packet the staff report, which identifies those three, these three amendments that we're proposing. The first would be to reduce the lot size in the watersheds from one acre to half an acre per residence. Number two, to increase that built-upon area from 12% to 24% in the watershed areas. And then the third deals with cluster subdivisions, which basically is matching the one, the half acre per residence. I will note that these changes would only affect the watersheds and not the critical areas. I will note that these changes would only affect the watersheds and not the critical areas, the critical areas would remain one acre per home, and 12% limit on how much of a piece of property can be built, since those areas are the closest to where you're pulling your drinking water from. We've presented this to the planning board, and they've recommended approval, they, they felt like that the proposed amendments would allow more flexibility to the property owners, and still achieve that goal of protecting the drinking water that the state requires. And I can answer any questions?
Questions, comments, commissioners? Thank you, Chris. So, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2121, request to amend Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, section 12, 134, water supply overlay district, please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for? Okay, great, come on up.
Yeah, I thought it was time for me to say something. Robert Williams.
I was wondering, Robert.
Eight fourteen East State Coach Trail in Foston. You know, we're talking about water quality, and, you know, once something's polluted, it could be polluted for a long time, and, you know, I could go either way, but from what I've heard tonight, I see no compelling reason to change anything, except for somebody's flexibility, and they're not, nobody's here saying, hey, I need flexibility, so I would recommend disapproving it, and leaving it like it is. Thank you.
So, anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2121, request to amend Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, section 12, 134, water supply overlay district, please come forward and state your name and address. No one else, so we will close the public hearing, and commissioners?
I have a question, Chris. I think it was on section three, critical areas remain the same, the 12%, could you give me an example of a place that would be a critical area?
Yes, so there's four critical areas, the first would be directly around Moss Lake, the properties that are on the lake and within a half mile of the lake, there's a lot of neighborhoods around Moss Lake that would be affected by the ordinance. The second would be the area directly around the intake on Kizer-Londell Road, where the Cleveland County Water Pools drinking water from. The third would be at Grover Street, where the City of Shelby Pools water from, and then the fourth would be the emergency intake along the Broad River. Those are the four areas that we call the critical area, it's defined by the state Environmental Management Commission, and they, and they want some tighter restrictions around those areas because they're the, that would be the areas that would most affect your drinking water supply.
So, basically, the planning board's asking us to adopt the state guidelines, which are a little less stringent than what we were.
That's right.
To allow some more flexibility.
That's right.
Another question, I make a motion we accept amendment.
Second.
Motion, and a second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carried. Okay, and then we'll move to the regular agenda, and I'm going to recognize Jason Falls, Business Development Director, and give us an update on the Two Kings Resort.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board, I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you about how the county has been responsive to the needs of Two Kings and the Kataba Nation. I want to give you kind of an update on a couple of points tonight. I want to talk to you about where they're currently at in their, their building of the casino, what their plans are for the immediate future, and then for, say, for a year out, and then I want to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing as far as emergency, emergency services around the property. Many of you were there for the grand opening they had on July 4th weekend, it's hard to believe, but they, they started this project about six months ago, that's when they started moving dirt. Currently, they've got a casino in operation out there, it opened up starting July the 4th weekend, it had 15,000 square feet, 500 machines inside that building, their unofficial numbers are, they're, they're seeing about 2,500 people come through there a day, again, that's on average, that would be about 900,000 people a year, just coming through the, those modulars that are out there. On September 28th, the, they began expanding their modular facility, so they're going from 15,000 square feet up to 30,000 square feet, they're going to take it from 500 machines inside that building to 1,000 machines. The expansion is expected to be complete December 15th, there is a big push from the owners and from the Kataba Nation for them to be open before Thanksgiving. But if you go down there now, you'll see, these are individual modulars that are being pulled out there, they received four on, on the 28th, and they're getting in about two a day, and they'll continue to get those in until they got 26 additional units out there to make up the 30,000 square feet. I wanted to bring you something that most people have not seen, and I don't know if any of you have seen this, this drawing yet, but they have changed things because of the number of visitors they've been seeing out there, and because of the success that they're seeing as far as a casino, they have really ramped up how they, how quickly they wanted to build and get into a larger facility. So, if you'll remember, we've already permitted, the county had already permitted a 60,000 square foot building that was going to be the casino floor, that was called the introductory phase. Well, the introductory phase is no more, now they've, they've changed it to the opportunity phase one, this is phase one of three phases, and I want to show you a couple of points on this slide, just some things for you to maybe look at. So, currently, this red building right here, half of the building is, is what's in current operation, and they have two offices here. The expansion that they're doing is the remainder of this here, that'll make up your 30,000 square feet. This parking lot here was paved within the last month, this is where their employees are parking, and are parking now. This is a road that they're going to make, this is going to be the main entrance to come into the casino property, once they build the next phase, there'll be a stoplight down here at the intersection over at King's Mountain Boulevard. Originally, they intended on building a 600 car parking deck, that is now grown to a 25 to 2600 car parking deck, it'll be about 650,000 square feet of concrete out there, and five floors, it'll be about 87 feet tall. This building here, you remember, I mentioned the 60,000 square foot building, this building here now is, is called the master plan phase one, that building is about 415,000 square feet, that includes about, almost roughly 200,000 square feet on the, the main floor, there'll be about 60,000 square feet below that, and in this corner right over here, this would be their hotel tower they're proposing, and that hotel tower is 29 stories tall. It'll have four restaurants, totaling about 37,000 square feet for restaurants in there. And again, I'll make one caveat with, with this drawing, their plan, plans change often, so this is what it is today. We are meeting with the architect tomorrow from New York, he is going to be bringing down some plans that are close to the plans that we need to start reviewing for permits, we'll be reviewing those tomorrow, and should see a lot more detail, but this is the outline, and he gave me permission for him, for, for this to be introduced first to y'all, so very few people have seen this. I will tell you, one of the, one of the features that they told me they're going to put in here is, along here, it's hard to see because of the colors, but there's, there's some blue lines right here, that is to represent an elevated manmade river with waterfalls on it, so whenever, if you turn down this service road, you would actually go under a bridge, go under the river. The reason for the elevated river is so that if you're on the main floor here, entering the hotel or the restaurants that are, that would be right here, you could see the river right outside the window. If you have been out on property, you'll notice that this right here is the existing parking lot for the, what's called the pre-launch facility that's here, and this right here is about half a hill now, they're in the process of moving 1,200 truckloads of dirt out of here to make room for a parking lot, and also for the road here, and they're going to use the dirt that they pull out to put into, to fill in, there's actually a retention pond right here that will be filled in, and they'll be putting some dirt over on the other side of the road as well. So, there's a lot of information on that slide there, and I really appreciate them giving me the opportunity to show that to you. This whole, this project is just part of what's going on in that region, there are so many, you'll see in a minute, so many housing developments that are going, going up, there's some opportunities for Grover, for them to grow and to expand as far as their housing, potentially some industry as well. Right now, this area along I-85 is not served by sewer. King's Mountain is working with, with the state and with other organizations to try to develop a sewer project that will feed into this area here, that will allow industrial expansion, it'll also relieve some of the compression that they'll see up in this area, and it'll also help out Grover that desperately needs additional sewer capacity. I've asked Chris if he could help me out with a, with a slide on just what kind of housing are we seeing going on in Cleveland County right now? Right now, between the municipalities and, and the county itself, we're, we've got approximately 3,000 residential units that are in the permitting or zoning process, that's a huge number, at least for me, that, that sounds like a big number, especially when, you know, you look at the, the number of total homes we have in, in inventory now is about 45,000. We also are expecting 2,000 more coming online within the next few months. When you talk to the officials over in King's Mountain, they'll tell you that they, they expect 5,000 new units just in their communities, so it's going to be a big number. If you think about percentage wise, that increases the housing inventory that we have in Cleveland County by almost 12%, just if we're at 5,000, that's huge, and it's a 2,000% increase of onsite residential construction over 2019 and 2020. So, when you see your teams that are out there from building inspections, or Fire Marshal's Office, or from Chris's office, they are working tremendously, just hard to keep up and keep, keep in front of all this. This is in addition to all the, the industrial stuff that's going on as well. One, one other note I would say about this is, if we're increasing our, our housing units by 5,000, and that's a 12% increase, you can expect your population to grow as well, that impacts your schools, that impacts Health Department, DSS, everything that you can think of, all, all of the services that are provided in the county, in fact, in fact, the fire departments, law enforcement, everything. I wanted to add a slide in here just to give you a snapshot of one month at the casino, what kind of calls they're having, it's CFS, it's calls for service. We did a study earlier this year with the, the county manager's office to look and see what we could expect as far as emergency calls coming in, both for fire, EMS, and law enforcement. The projections that we, we received, and this is looking at industry wide for casinos nationwide, you would see about 1.1 call per service, for service for every 10,000 visitors, for, that's for fire and EMS, for law enforcement, you would typically see nine for every 10,000 visitors. Cutting the chase on it, we, we saw in the month of September, we had 11 fire and EMS calls, actually, all those were EMS calls, and we had 15 law, law enforcement calls. That equates to 1.5 calls for every 10,000 visitors, so just a tick higher than what the average is for fire and EMS, and for law enforcement, we were 75% lower than what the national average is. And to look at another, just another statistic, if you were to look at the number of calls for the casino property versus the number of calls countywide, for all the calls that came in for the county, we had, in September, we had 15 calls for law enforcement at the casino property out of 6,556, so point 023% of the calls were for that property. We had no fire calls for the month of September, and 11 out of 2,432 calls were for EMS. So, those numbers are, 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 I think, average wise, are good compared to what you see across other places in, in the nation. We want to make those numbers better, Two Kings wants to make those numbers better, and the Kataba Nation wants to make those numbers better, for, for all the right reasons. They want to have the numbers better so that they have more people coming to their casino, if you feel safe, it's somewhere you'll go. We want to have it better because protection for our residents, and also lower cost, because those are their expenses every time we roll a vehicle. Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, they provides, provided specialized training for the Two Kings security teams already, they've had de-escalation training out on site, the SWAT team for the sheriff's department has been out to Two Kings Casino to look at different scenarios out there, they've had active shooter simulations out there, so they, they've worked extremely hard on that end, and I, I want to congratulate the sheriff's office for all their, their hard work, I know that they're one of the reasons why those numbers are as low as they are. Two Kings continues to work with our, our county first responders and their own, own staff personnel to reduce those call volumes and to reduce response, or to improve response times. Bethlehem Fire Department, along with other mutual aid stations, have been on site to visit, emergency management, Perry has been out there and talking about special events, traffic mitigation, if you, if you were out there during their groundbreaking ceremonies, and during their opening ceremonies, you saw, you saw Perry out on the side of the road navigating through the, the cars, and Cleveland Community College, they've been very active. I went out with some of the staff members from the college last week, talking to them about training, emergency training opportunities, and again, Perry Davis is going to be working out with Two Kings to provide fire extinguisher training, that's something that we're in talks with them now about. And I just want to thank you for all the support that you've given the departments and the county, working for, for the residents of Cleveland County. You know, we knew whenever this thing came that there was going to be some challenges. You know, we knew whenever this thing came that there was going to be some challenges and there was going to be some opportunities. And what you've positioned us to do is to, to prepare for the challenges that we're going to see out there and to take advantage of the opportunities that we saw. Do I have any questions about anything, anything at all out there at the casino property or?
I have a question.
Sure.
One, part of the information you didn't provide, but you alluded toward the development in school, roads. But you didn't say that any impact studies has started. You said that the permits have been put out, but no mention of impact studies. I'd like to know when they're going to start. And for each one of the housing developments that they're putting out there as an impact study being made for roads, schools, utilities? Because I know that some that they're already building in that area, they've done nothing. It's created problems.
And, and, and it's a fair question. The, you know, a good bit of the house developments are going to be taking place inside of ETJs. They have.
But still again, but still again, the city of King's Mountain issued permits for it. And they have not done impact studies. And I'd like to know if they're planning on doing any for these other developments.
Sure. I, I think that's a fair question.
Can I make a general comment? I, to Commissioner Hudson's point, there, we, we, Jason mentioned briefly, we contracted with a company called Analytical Environmental Solutions to help us arrive at these pro formas for public safety engagement. Jason showed that the information and the reality is that the casino has been much less impactful than what the national averages are. It's really synchronized and embedded itself in our community in an amazing way. And now we can shift our focus from getting it open to more of a long-term impact housing. And, and school being probably the biggest too. And we have engaged, AES does housing studies, population impact studies. Jason and I talked to several communities around the country that are similar to us, meaning rural 100, 150,000 citizens to their executive staff and said, you know, you, you had a casino developing in your community 15, 20 years ago. What happened to the biggest impact? And it's things that most people wouldn't think about. School growth being one of them, but the other side is the number of languages that may be spoken, the diversity and workforce that come to work at these type of resorts. So we, we, we are evaluating those type of things. That, you know, the utility infrastructure side, the roadside, isn't necessarily something we're specifically engaged in, but school impact, population impact, housing impact, public safety, local government services impact. I think that we have started collecting data to have a more long-term approach to mitigating those changes. But it's, it, the reality is, I think it's all very, very positive at this point.
I appreciate that. But then again, whoever issues that permit for a large housing development is responsible for doing impact study. We did not issue permits for. Now that's by the state. And the state should be willing to, the DOT should say, okay, let's run these studies to find out what roads are going to be like, what have we got to do? But the study you're talking about, I appreciate all of it. But it's not giving us the information. Do we need to widen this road? Do we need to?
Yeah.
Stop sign here, do we do this and this? That's not there. Whoever issues the permit should be doing those particular impact studies. And they should be going on right now.
The roads that are right around exit five, those have been studied by DOT. And those have been, they have worked on.
They have, but King's Mountain Boulevard, King's Mountain Boulevard was studied for an impact study. But then again, you look on Stryper Road, 300 houses built, but there was no study done.
Understood.
They're, they're doing the major roads. I'm talking about the secondary road and the other roads. I mean, I hate to be negative and put you on the spot, but I think that whoever's issuing these permits is not doing what they need to be doing to let the people know what's going on.
Well, I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments. I do meet weekly with the city of King's Mountain and I will mention that to them.
I raise the same concern in the NPO, the same concern with the state. And that's what they say, it's up to whoever issues the permit.
Understood.
Any other?
I'll make sure I bring that.
Any other comments, questions for Jason?
But I appreciate the information, the information, good that you mean to get off on something negative.
It's not negative.
That's the information I think the citizens should have to get right to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any commissioners have anything they'd like to report? Anybody from staff?
I do, just real quick for the record. On item number six, were you as the board approved continuing the public hearing? For the record, the public hearing has been continued to November 2nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM here in the county commissioners chamber. We're located here at 311 East Marion Street in Shelby.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess just for the record that the Veterans Council's meeting Friday, you're going to attend it because I'm going to be out town. And they're going to be having a uptown veterans parade, November 11th at 11 o'clock. So if anyone's interested there, that's just extra information.
Yes. Do, I hate to put you on the spot, Brian, but do we have the latest COVID numbers? Are we, are we trending down a little bit?
Yeah, so at your last meeting, Tiffany reported that our 14-day average was about 100 cases per day. Our positivity rate was up to about 18%. Our hospital resources were stressed. We've seen significant improvement. We're down about 15, 20%. Our positivity rate now is, I want to think, 13 or 14%. State average is about nine or 10. When you look at, at kind of our east and west, rather than Gaston, we, we dipped below those. So I think people in Cleveland County, our, our eligible vaccination rates, I think, reached 52%. So I, I think our folks are making good decisions, going to think the right way and we're seeing some, some relief.
Thank you. As always, we'd like to thank the staff for all they do. I know this is trying times. Next meeting of Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, October 19th, 6:00 PM in the commissioners chamber. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may.
All in favor?